Good afternoon, I would like to call to order the Valdosta Board Education Work Session for August the 27th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. At this time, at this time we please bow for education. Well, we thank you for this day, we thank you for everything you've done thus far, we thank you for your protection. We ask for you to continue to protect us, or we ask you to be with us as we discuss the business of the Valdosta School Education. We ask that your will be done, or we give it for all our sin, and whatever the devil has set out for our back, we ask it to return for our good. In this name and prayer, amen. At this time, we please stand and honor this pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Good evening again, and thank you all for joining us today here face to face, and also those that are joining us face to face. At this time, I may have a proof of the agenda. Any discussion, all in favor? At this time, may I approve of the minutes from July 23rd, 2024.
Now Chair, I move if we approve the minutes, can we add a correction in the motion? To correct that the number 10 voluntary board application, that the votes, it says voter nine to zero, but then each individual says our votes are not recorded, that we change that to yay.
That makes sense. Do we have a second? Any discussion, all in favor? Please make note to review the minutes from August 23rd, 2024. At this time, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Lockhart.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this evening, we're joined by the Pineville Alumni Association, and I would like to present to some, and introduce to others, members of that association who were just here to share a few words with us. And this time, I respectfully ask for Dr. Housiel to come forward.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I would like to acknowledge and welcome all of our new board members. Our veteran board members, our superintendent, and staff. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. Warren Lee, who has supported our efforts from the very beginning. Thank you, sir. I am Dr. Willie Housiel, the representative of the Pineville High School Association here in Valdosta. We all graduated from the Valdosta school system, but from a different era. We call it the Pineville High School era, that spanned from 1956 through 1972. The mission of the alumni is to enhance the educational opportunities and experiences for students at Pineville Elementary School and Mesa Horn Learning Center, in an effort to give back to the community where we receive our education. A packet has been provided for your information. Enclosed is a DVD about our recent completed documentary of this legendary Pineville High School story. It was created to preserve and to promote our history, our legacy, and serve as a bridge to connect the past and future generations. You may also access our website at www.youtube.com backslash @Pineville High Alumni Association. Are there any questions at this time? If not, I would like to thank each and every one of you for listening to me, and we want to wish you all the best success for this upcoming school year. Thank you so very much, welcome again.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn over to Dr. Marshall, May I down for ever?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of Valdosta School, Dr. Alvarez and myself would like to talk about our AP journey, Advanced Placement Journey of the last five years. And so, Dr. Alvarez will come forward and talk about the background of our AP program and the vertical teamwork, and then I'll come back and share some data with you. So, Dr. Alvarez.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, board, superintendent Lockhart. Thank you for having us tonight to share some good news. We were excited to see the AP results again, that Dr. Marshall will go into the details later. But as you see improvements, I think it's always important to think about, you know, what did we do, why did it happen? And when we started talking about this, we started going back a decade. So, I'm going to take you back 10 years of work that's been done to get us to this point, but I'll be brief. Going back 10 years, we've had our AVID system, our average college graduate system, advancement via individual determination, in place for many years. It started alongside BECA, so we've been going about 17 years with that. And the purpose of that is to identify students with potential and challenge those students with the AVID system of support to take honors, AP, and IB courses. And so, we have been working on that mission for many years. Also, we have been working on talent development, a lot of the work was kicked off by Ms. Alvarez over 10 years ago, and working on gifted endorsements. I know there's been a lot of discussion about endorsements and recognizing distinguished teachers. Endorsements matter, they make a difference as far as teaching and learning each and every day from those distinguished teachers. So, that's been a niche that for many years. In FY14, so we'll go back, we received a Boisette Grant for around $50,000 tied into the college board, and we started some vertical alignment work here in Valdosta City Schools, working with middle and high school teachers, and exposing teachers to conferences all over the nation in training and providing strategies that would allow students to be exposed to rigorous coursework prior to entering high school. In FY15, we rolled out advanced content in middle school for grades six through eight. The AP model was already in place at the high school, and it was an open enrollment process. So, the focus was equity, if you want to try it, then you can take it. The problem with that, not the problem, but the challenge is, when you start ninth grade, your transfer starts. And so, what we saw was many students would take that AP class as their first rigorous one and hit the wall. And so, it would also hit some of their GPAs. And we know the HOPE grant, maintaining that 3.0 higher is important, and it could be determining the factor, factor that was for myself, whether you go to college or not. And so, we wanted to protect our students, but also provide more opportunities than middle school. So, we started a pre-AP type model, but we called it Advanced Content. And that started with PLA in math and these six, eight courses, and later added those studies in science in eighth grade to allow some accelerated type pathways, with the goal of exposing students to rigor prior to that transfer or that GPA starting in high school. It also gave some students who didn't realize that potential, the acknowledgement that they can do more. And many of the students who were in AVID got the support they needed to have that realization. In 2015 and 16, we doubled our AVID participation in middle school and increases in high school. In FY15, we rolled out that ready step now called PSAT 8-9 for all eighth graders, so it's a district initiative we paid for. And that later got tied to Khan Academy, and of course, AP potential, to allow students to know what courses are you more likely to make a three, four, or five in them if you take it. The state also provides a grant each year for our 10th graders to take the PSAT and also receive AP potential information. The high school can also review that information. Over the years, we've increased from, I believe, 11 AP courses to 15. And a couple of courses in particular that we identified through AP potential were AP Environmental Science, Computer Science, and then this past year, we piloted African-American studies for now 15 offerings. That is a large amount of offerings for our school district to have 15. Some additional things, again, special opportunities, special programs. In FY16, we started the STEM Academy Plan. In FY17, we started the academy at Valdosta Middle School and received a $250,000 Langdale Grant that allowed us to be one-to-one in that academy. A year later, we rolled up and opened the facility, STEM Academy Facility, offering advanced and interdisciplinary coursework to our middle school students. And we've now opened that up for access to non-teacher schools at Valdosta Middle School. In FY19, we partnered with Middle Georgia RISA, and we had 23 teachers and leaders go through the STEM endorsement. We were awarded 23 STEM endorsements that year. That changed instruction at our STEM academy. In FY20, we became a nationally certified STEM school, the repugnant, using that evidence and the training that we had from our teachers. And with that, our AVID class had been within that building as well, we continued to share what opportunities are available with students. And so, over time, we've added many gifted endorsements, we've had an annual grant from the Georgia Department of Education to train AP teachers in areas that we needed to train in, and of course, IB as well. And then, I think it's important to make the point that MTS, MTSS is a huge topic today, but it goes both ways. It goes supporting students in the lower percentile, but also the students who have the potential in the upper percentile. So, laying out the work that we've done over the past year, I want to say thank you to our board for approving AP and IB budgets and PSAT budgets each and every year. So, our students do have an equal playing field to take rigorous coursework and to be accepted into colleges of their choice. So, at this time, I'm going to let Dr. Marshall share the good news with some of the specifics on the day.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. If I call your attention to the board, the second slide, excuse me. Second slide shows just some data in regards to the number of AP students we've had over the last five years. And as you can see during the pandemic, we did see a decrease in the number of scholars taking AP courses, but of course, after the pandemic, it did increase. And so, this past year, we had 213 scholars who took an AP course or more than one AP course. And so, one of the other trends that I want to call your attention to is, over the last five years, not only did we see an increase in the number of students, but the number of students who took more than one AP test or AP course. And so, what we want to focus on when we do our AP classes and students taking these AP exams, is students scoring three or higher. So, it's out of five that they can receive, how I've been the highest. Three for most of your colleges and universities will award credit to that scholar for the class that they took. And so, we focus on threes or higher. So, this past year, we had 142 scholars who scored three or higher on their college exams, which was 66.7% or two-thirds of our AP scholars who received a three or higher, which is phenomenal. And you can see over the course of the years, in 2020, we had 46.4%, all the way to this past year, 66.7%. I do want to call your attention to something that Dr. Alvarez stated. Some programs and schools have selected students who take AP courses, but here at Valdosta High School, we ensure an ethical opportunity by allowing any scholar who wants to take an AP course be able to do so, either through teacher recommendation or if that scholar wants to take it, he or she may do so. So, we love the fact that we do provide that ethical opportunity to scholars, and that once they get in that course, they are exposed to rigor, a college preparatory environment, so that they can be successful, and then go on to do other programs in our school, IB, or doing enrollment if they so choose to do so. The next slide just shows you the trend data by our different courses that we offer. And this past year, we had seven out of the 15 courses showed a significant increase in the percentage of students who score a three or higher. So, once again, we're proud of that work. And so, what are we doing in the building to ensure that we can continue these trends? Well, one of the ways that we do so is by recruitment. So, we have Advanced Placement Nights periodically throughout the year when we do our Freshman Academy. We have staff members as well as students who are there to showcase what AP is all about. We also have our AP teachers meet quarterly so that they can review their data through the various tests that they give in AP classroom, which is a program that they can use to assess their scholars. We also have our teachers to predict where they want their scholars to be. And we felt like bringing them together to look at the data and to make realistic goals and to set high expectations really improved and allowed us to do some wonderful things these past year, these past years specifically with this past year. Also want to share that one of the things that I wanted to do this year is to make sure that we recognize and honor the great work that our scholars are doing, but also our teachers are doing. And so, if you look to the next slide, you will see that we purchased yard signs for all of our scholars who score a five on the AP exam. And on September 9th, any scholar who scored three or higher, they have been invited to attend a celebration where we will honor them and their great work along with their teachers, our four job well done. And so, we look forward to strengthening our AP program and expanding it, allowing our scholars to take these classes, and if they so choose to do other options, their junior, senior year, they can use those through the AP program, but also doing enrollment. And if they decide to continue to do AP until they become a senior graduate, they'll be truly ready for college and universities once they get there. So, I truly want to thank the work of Dr. Alvarez and Central Office, our Valdosta High School dedicated and dynamic teachers, Ms. Wanda Chatstang, who has served as the AP coordinator these last seven years, and of course, our UHHS AP scholars who have done a phenomenal job assessing, taking these tests and doing well. So, thank you guys for your support, and we continue to do great things at Valdosta High School. Are there any questions at this time?
Madam Chair. Doc, in regards to, in regards to the numbers that we're looking at here compared to other systems in our region, how do we compare, do you know?
So, in regards to our region, I don't have that information on how we compare to our region. We do get data on our state and our RISA, not RISA, but globally, and for several of these areas, we have surpassed the state and the global averages in some of these assessments.
That was going to be my next question in regards to the state, how do we compare with them?
Yes, sir, it just depends upon the different courses, and so, for some of these areas, we have done well. I will say one off the top of my head, the computer science. We saw a great increase with computer science, and so, they definitely did a great job. We piloted the African-American Studies course along with several other Georgia schools in the United States. We done a very, we done a great job with the AP African-American Studies, and we actually parent that class with AVID. So, those scholars were big, they were able to get some extra support and some strategies to use. And so, we can give you more specifics about how we compare with Georgia and the state level and at the national level, but overall, we did do well in some of these areas.
So, the African-American Studies was added last year, 23, 24, two years, is that right?
I'm sorry, say it again, sir.
The African, the African-American Studies that was added the 23 through 24 years, is that right?
Yes, last year was its first year, so it was a pilot year, and so, several schools in the state and the nation participated in that pilot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you. At this time, I'll have Dr. Alvarez, and please make note that this is an agenda.
All right, good evening again. I also have Mr. Elder, our lead on the BECA field trip to Washington DC. Our recommendation is to approve 22 ninth grade students, the three adults, that attend this annual BSU-sponsored field trip. And we shared this passport meeting that all transportation, meals, all the instruction provided, there will be medical access and night security provided for our scholars on this trip. So, it's all inclusive, thanks to some partners in our community. And we're looking at students attending this October 6th through 10th, and they will fly out of Jacksonville at this time. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Elder to add any other details to go on with the close-up trip. But again, it is an annual trip, and we're looking for approval to attend tonight. Total estimated cost is $51,000 to $54,000 depending on flights, but again, that is all covered through the donation of the issue partnership.
The only thing I'd like to add is that the only cost is just, for the city schools, their potential is just blessing us to and from the airport. So, it'd be a long walk to Jacksonville, so it's always provided us a blessing, and we greatly appreciate that. And then, I always like to talk about the impact briefly, you know, this is a life-changing trip for most of our scholars. The poll asked them last week, 18 of the 22 have never been on the airplane. So, for a lot of them, it's the first time, so even, I mean, you can say going to Florida is going out of the state, but that's not really, I mean, it's so close. This is truly a life-changing opportunity, and something they may never get to do. So, we appreciate the partnership and allow us to do this trip here every year and impacting our scholars. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it.
Okay, this is next time, I'm going to hand over the motion.
So, move.
Standing.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
At this time, I'll turn over to the board. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Personnel committee met on August 23rd, 2024, from 12:30 to 1:30. And at this time, I'll call Mrs. Alvarez up to give us that update. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We had a great meeting last week, my very first committee meeting, thank you all. So, Ms. Brown, Mr. Goyard, Mr. Frenshaw, and Mr. Lieber, all in attendance. We had three items to discuss, the first was an HR update. For myself, we shared our preliminary teacher retention data for the district is hovering at about 86.57%. The official teacher retention data will be shared with the committee later in the semester after our first state recording window, which is CPI that we upload after learns, we'll get an official retention right back from the state, and we'll share it out with the committee at that time. at that time. Our staffing app update as of last Friday, six of our schools were fully staffed, and we have six vacant positions currently posted across the other five schools. Those vacant positions include areas of special education and foreign language. We also shared preliminary ideas for modernizing our approach to providing benefits for all of our employees. As part of this plan, I would like to explore the possibility of partnering with a benefits brokerage through an official RFP process. The benefits for partnering with a benefits brokerage include more negotiating power than a single school district, resulting in the lowest prices for the highest quality products and services for all of our employees. The ability to secure new employee benefits that may be of interest to our employees I shared with the committee that in interviewing other districts that work with brokerages, they have added some benefits such as air ambulance coverage, some have added pet insurance and wellness insurance. The broker can also keep us updated and aligned to annual legislative updates and changes pertaining to insurance benefits, assist us with new teacher orientation, assist us with open enrollment. Many brokerage firms have teams in place to be within our schools during open enrollment to answer questions and assist with plan selection. This gives our staff that red cus, red carpet customer service that we all love to give them. We also can, will have high-quality customer service with easy-to-use websites, apps for their phones, call centers, virtual conference calls. It won't be just the one single person in our office trying to field all those calls at one time. And the best part about this is it's no cost to the school district. The broker would make their commissions off of the vendors, off the products that they sell to our employees. So we shared all of that information. Mr. Lee requested that we have more time to review the request, and if the board moves forward, he would certainly want our current vendors to be contacted prior to the RFP being released so that everyone is aware. Other committee members agreed, and this item will be presented tonight for information only. The second thing on our agenda was a non-teaching salary schedule that Mrs. Cashwell provided information on. The comprehensive salary study was completed in June. Ms. Cashwell recommended using the salary schedule for the new positions as they are filled. Approval of this process allows us to be competitive for the next three to four budget years. Dr. Lockhart agreed with this schedule, that the schedule is fair and concise. Was going to share the document with the board members for review, and he would like this item to be presented tonight as well for information only. Finally, Dr. Snead presented information on Soliant Health and AmeriTherapy MOU, Support Services. She presented a request to enter into MOU agreements with Soliant Health and AmeriTherapy for hard staff areas, such as special education and speech-language pathologists. Soliant Health offers the district benefits, risk management, and enhanced recruitment strategies to fill our specialized positions when we are unable to find certified professionals to fill them. Committee members inquired about payment for the service. Dr. Snead explained that we pay a set fee for each position, and we are billed monthly by the agency. Mr. Lee noted that we need to be actively recruiting because we receive local taxpayer money to outsource these services. He would like to see the department grow in the area of recruiting. Dr. Lockhart agreed that we would look at the trends and patterns to see where our greatest needs are concerning open positions. Mr. Gilyard asked if ESS could assist us with this need. Dr. Snead provided information about the services ESS offers our district, and there was also discussion about the funding source for these professionals when they are used. Dr. Lockhart requested we bring these items to the full board as information only and encouraged us to remember that we do only have six vacancies right now in our schools, and our retention rate is projected to be right at eighty-six percent. He also reminded us that we have to think outside the box when we have positions to fill, but the personnel is just simply not available. Ms. Brown agreed that we should bring all of this before the full board so we can process the information. However, AmeriTherapy is time-sensitive because this is for SLPs who will be providing services by a call, one of our employees, Tom Maturi Lee, and that will be presented to you later tonight. We adjourn at one twenty-two PM. Any questions? Comments? Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Miss H.
Personnel, um, let me, let me, let me, I have to see my, my. Personnel committee met August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, twelve-thirty to one-thirty, and the topic of discussion was our superintendent's contract, and the meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
At this time, Ms. Alvarez.
So for information only presented to you tonight under our strategic plan goal, Area Three for High Quality Workforce, the superintendent recommends the issuance of a request for proposals for benefits consulting services. The rationale is that Valdosta City Schools request the opportunity to post an RFP for benefits consulting services. Partnership with a benefits broker will ensure that we remain competitive as we seek to recruit and retain the highest quality professionals in all positions across the district. Working with a benefits consulting service gives more negotiating power than a single school district, resulting in the lowest prices for the highest supplemental insurance products and services for our employees. It als, it will also increase the likelihood that we are able to secure new employee benefits that may be of greatest interest to our changing workforce. Benefits Consulting Group supports districts with all aspects of new teacher orientation, open enrollment, including the development of high-quality marketing materials that can also be used for recruitment, which we know will, our big recruitment season will start in January, so we would love to have these marketing materials ready for us to use at that time. As a funding source, there is no cost at Valdosta City Schools. Brokers earn their compensation by partnering with their vendors. And I believe a copy of these RFP was also provided. Do you all have any questions?
How are we handling this now?
We have one staff member in our, who straddles between our finance department and our HR department. And it puts us at a little bit of risk because none of us in our department currently hold a license to sell insurance. So really, when we have people we call and need immediate information about their policy or what to do next, they expect us to be able to provide that information, but we cannot, we are not allowed to. So we have to then give them the number or the web address for them to then go to the third party to get that information or whatever.
So this would open up to, um, more than three?
Possibly.
So it looks like, well, we've got one vendor, and this would open up to multiple vendors that may have different offerings and allow our staff to have a dedicated personal chapter in the email.
Yes, sir. The process we, we would like to have would be, we have a committee in place, we, we'll put the RFP out, and we allow brokerages across the United States to apply. We narrow that down to our top three or four based on the criteria that we've identified within the RFP. We have a committee who is reviewing, and the committee is reflective of our, of our teachers and our employees. So we have teachers, air professionals, leaders, district staff, and others involved in this process. And then we have the top two or three come and do presentations. In most of the other districts, once they have selected their brokerage, they come in and they do a wide survey to really get to know the workforce and know what it is that they want and need. And at the same time, they're analyzing the current benefits that we offer to find any gaps or places where we, we may not be offering everything that we need to for our employees. They put all that information together, and we come back together as a team, and they give us options or suggestions on what we should do next. At every point along the way, we have the power to say yes or no. Every insurance agency has an opportunity to submit proposals to be a part of our benefits providers, so everybody who is currently a provider can absolutely still be a part. It would just be part of the analysis when they look at the price of the product. And then in the end, they create a really nice handbook, they establish a website for us, they have a call center that is very Valdosta City's specific. There's not been one district that I talked to that has been unhappy with the broker that they have. They haven't all used the same one, but they've all been very grateful to have that additional service, and their, um, their employees have all expressed satisfaction with the, the support they've given. You have any more questions or comments? Thank you.
At this time, I have Ms. Alvarez.
Good evening, board. I'm here to discuss the compensation, classification and compensation study. I'm pretty sure you were sent a copy of the scales, if not a block copies, if you needed them. But in May, education planners presented us with the results of our classification and compensation study. The compensation and classification salary study included a classified and leadership scale that is based on prepared salary ranges across our area. Since the budget was already built, the non-teaching schedule was not approved in the FY twenty-five budget, but approval is recommended now. With approval upfront, there's new staff onboard within the district, and we need a competitive salary scale that allows us to assign salaries based on experience and education that are fair and consistent for the future. If the future budgets allow, the goal would be to phase eligible staff into this scale over the next three to four years. In order to fairly compensate our employees for years of service, job duties, and performance, we need a fair and consistent salary scale for all positions.
Do you have any questions? Can I run a paper?
Yeah, any questions or comments? Thank you.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lockhart.
Members of the board, we have for you for information on the last sections of the policy revision project, sections K, L, and M. Thank you for your work, and as we've gone through this, and we are nearing the finish line. Of course, you know, Commission G S D A, their legal council to update and revise our policy medical sections presented are reviewed monthly until all have been updated. These sections have been available for review in common for thirty days. And today, we would like to bring forward these sections K, general public relations, L, inter-organizational relations, and M, relations with other educational agencies. They'll be taken for thirty days, and I will press action in the month of September. Policies that are to be presented with the archive and use procedural guidance if needed, and I will make sure that you, since we're not at the board office, we'll make sure you get the edicts along with this chart via email this week. And that's all with this.
Thank you. At this time, I would turn it over to Mr. Navy.
The finance committee meeting was held on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. The meeting was called to order at twelve-thirty PM. The indication was given by Mr. Deloche. Members in attendance, Mr. Deloche, myself, Ms. Thunzlong, and Mr. Lee. Ms. Cashwell shared a presentation about twenty twenty-four millage rate and equalization. Committee members discussed and agreed to present discussed millage rate to the full board. The meeting goes adjourned at one PM.
Do you have any questions or comments? Do you already know if this is going to turn back over to how we have it?
So the internet works. Okay. All right. So we have just received the proposed millage rate from the city last
We've got to.
The nineteenth. So we had a meeting, a finance committee meeting yesterday to go over the, the proposed rate and Valdosta City Schools' hopefully rate. If you can't hear me? Okay, so based on the twenty twenty-four tax digest, the rollback rate for Valdosta City Schools would be eleven point oh five seven. One mil in twenty twenty-four will generate two million, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars. Per state law, the school system loses equalization funding when the millage rate drops below fourteen. So Valdosta City Schools would stand to lose six point eight million dollars in the equalization funding if we took the rollback rate of eleven point oh five seven. We could leave the millage rate at fourteen point oh six eight, which is what it currently is, or we could put it all the way back to fourteen point zero, but the difference between those two millage rates is only a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So the Valdosta City School Board of Education proposes to retain the current millage rate of fourteen point oh six eight. If you look at it the last several years, we have taken the rollback rate every year since two thousand nineteen. Twenty twenty-three, again, it was fourteen point oh six eight, and that is what we are proposing again for the twenty twenty-four tax season. So each year, property values are reassessed to review the value of taxable property. When the trend of prices on properties that have recently sold in the county indicate that there's been an increase in the fair market value, the Board of Tax Assessors is required by law to redetermine the value of such taxable property. This is called reassessment. So the rollback rate would be eleven point oh five seven, and by Georgia state law, if the school system roll back under fourteen, the school system would lose its equalization funding, which is six point eight million. So they did, they reassess the commercial property values before this tax season, and that is why we've had such a large increase in our assessed value, which is why the rollback rate has dropped so much. Again, Georgia law requires school systems to maintain a minimum equivalent millage rate of fourteen mils of N and O property tax, or otherwise loses their equalization funding, which is part of state funding for our school systems. So if E C L does not maintain that required minimum equivalent millage rate of fourteen, the FY twenty-five equalized funding of six point eight million will be lost. This will hold true until the millage rate comes back up to fourteen. So if it drops below fourteen one year, we lose six point eight. If we drop, if it stays below fourteen the next year, it's another six point eight. So it, it, every year, you would lose the same amount. The documentation below, if you needed to find the laws pertaining to the millage rate. And they did try to drop it this year to ten, but it was not passed. Any questions? Um, so the state of Georgia has a constitutional obligation to provide every child with adequate public education. So over the past fifty years, almost every state's funding laws have been created or changed in response to lawsuits for certain districts not being funded as others are. So Georgia lawmakers in nineteen eighty-five enacted the Quality Basic Education Act, which is the same formula that we use to fund our state funding act, and after lawsuits claimed that rural, low-wealth school districts were not given the same access. So the amounts that districts can raise through property taxes varies based on the property that they have in their district. When these local taxes make up a significant portion of the school system's budget, that difference can be thousands of dollars per student in what we spend on our education. So Georgia's funding formula includes a grant to make sure that districts across the state can offer comparative, similar opportunities regardless of their pri- can offer comparative similar opportunities regardless of their property wealth. These are called equalization grants. Policymakers did not enact these equalization grants on an abstract idea, um, or of fairness. On the contrary, these grants have come to represent Georgia's constitutional commitment to providing equal education for our students. And on the right side is how equalization is, is determined. Um, there's basically a sliding scale of all districts across the state, and they have a set aside amount, and based on what your property wealth is, that's how they determine what your equalization funding will be. And like I said, ours in twenty four was six point eight, in twenty three was three point six or three point eight. So it does vary based on, um, the property taxes each year. Okay, um, so if you had a hundred and twenty thousand dollar home, you're assessed at forty percent value of that home. So the difference between the eleven point oh five seven rollback rate and the fourteen point oh six proposed rate for Bautista City Schools is only a difference of a hundred and forty four, if you look in the annual difference column, a hundred and forty four dollars and fifty two cents per year, which is a difference of twelve oh four per month if you have it in extra. Um, so the, the difference that we're, we're asking for is not a huge amount to most homeowners over a year's time. Any more questions? Um, and this is, this slide is to show over the last, um, six years what we have gotten. So if you look at two thousand nineteen and the real and personal property, um, road, you can see that in two thousand nineteen, one billion, six hundred and seventy eight million, nine hundred and five thousand is what the assessed property value was, and it has gone up to two billion, six hundred and eighty six million, seven hundred and forty thousand in twenty twenty four, which is why the rate has rolled back is because our assessed values are so much higher than they were six years ago. So they try to keep our, our taxable, our tax revenue to Bautista City Schools around that same amount each year. So if you look at nineteen, we got a little, um, just shy of twenty five million. In twenty twenty three, which is for this fiscal year now, we propose, we expect to get about twenty six and a half million. And with the rollback of eleven point oh five, we would have gotten twenty six point eight million. So in order to get the process started to keep the rate at fourteen point oh six eight, we have to have three hearings, um, and they have to be advertised in the newspaper up to a week before the first meeting. So we do need to get those in the newspaper fairly quickly. But, um, so we propose to have two meetings on September seventeenth at noon and six o'clock. And on September twenty fourth, we'll do it at five o'clock before our regular scheduled board meeting at six. Um, just to give you an idea of what six, I'm going to skip to the second bullet. Six point eight million dollars is the equivalent of sixty five to seventy certified employees. So without the, the equalization that we would be losing, we would have to figure out how to find jobs or pay for sixty five to seventy employees. Um, so dropping the millage rate below fourteen will have a six point eight million dollar loss each year. So let's say we didn't do the rollback rate in the next year. Then the following year, in order to make up the lost revenue for two years of not having equalization, we would have to raise the millage rate to over seventeen. Um, so it, it's a lot easier to leave it at fourteen point oh six eight than to raise it to seventeen next year to make up the difference. Um, taxpayers, just to throw this out there, any taxpayers who claim homestead exemption can get a six thousand dollar decrease on their assessed home value, thus lowering their overall property taxes. So I have questions.
Do I have any questions?
It's, it's my turn again.
At this year, does it have time?
Um, so this is for approval of military publication in the Bautista Daily Times. So, um, superintendent recommends the publication of Bautista City Schools' military in the legal organ. Per state law, school systems must propose an annual military for maintenance and operations. After meeting with the finance committee, the superintendent recommends maintaining the military at fourteen point oh six eight. Once the rate is initially approved by the local school board this evening, it will be published in the legal organ at least one week prior to public hearings.
Do you have a motion?
Chair, I recommend that we approve the publications for the military.
Any discussion?
Um, Chair. I feel like this needs to be repeated. Uh, as we all know, with the devastating COVID that hit all school systems, uh, and with the evaluation, reevaluation of the property in our area, we are looking at the other school system at this time. Uh, we are missing the money that the government gave the school system to operate our system. It would be a good opportunity to, uh, help not only our taxpayers, but our, our families that's in need at this time. However, our children must come first. And as long as I'm sitting on this board, that's, that's what I will have first. So due to that, uh, as I stated in the personnel, uh, finance committee, that we are not in a position to lower our military at this time. We have no idea what's going to happen. We know we have had a big federal election, presidential election, two or three wars around. Now it's just not the time to lower, to lower our military. Now is not the time to increase it, but to hold where we are so that we are able to continue to not only, uh, make sure our kids are taken care of, but make sure our staff is in place for the C R two.
All in favor? At this time, I would like to ask you about this meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, superintendent recommends entering into a contractual agreement with Soliant Health be approved for the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year. Soliant Services provides staffing solutions focusing on hard to fill positions or those specialized positions. They are required to accommodate students' individual education plans. Collaborating with Soliant will offer the district several benefits to access a qualified talent pool, flexibility and risk management, continuity, administrative relief, and then the access to specialized skills, enhanced recruitment strategies, and reduced turnover rates. These advantages collectively contribute to a more effective and efficient educational environment. The funding for Soliant would be district general funds, but the money is already being allocated through those vacant positions that the personnel will be filling.
Do you have any questions or comments regarding the board? Do you have any comments?
Oh, ma'am, gee. Is this the same company that we used last year?
No, ma'am, this is a different company. Uh, last year we used Pro Care. This year is Soliant. They were able to provide or locate staff in our area to fill our vacancies. Pro Care was not.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Mr. Bailey, still here.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends entering into a contractual agreement with AmeriTherapy Services to be, to be approved for the twenty four, twenty five school year. AmeriTherapy makes available speech and occupational therapists as needed. It also offers services for pediatric, adolescent, and adult speech and language services. The type of services, these type of services are required for our students with individualized educational plans. So it's something that they have to have. They also provide the highest quality service for patients in need of speech, language, swallowing, communication, and other therapies. All the therapists are certified and licensed to evaluate and treat our students. A T S additionally offers bilingual speech and language services in Spanish to meet the linguistic, linguistic and cultural needs of families in our educational environment. The funding source would be general funds. I was also asked to find out, um, the time period in which the current substitute is needed, and that would be for months, September and October. The teacher is already out on, or the speech therapist is already out on, um, only if she will be returning at the, be returning at the end of October.
This is an act of honor. Do you have a question?
So move.
Any discussion?
Sir. How would, how would you in this town, how, how would these services be provided now? I know you say somebody's out, but we have more than one district, correct?
We have, we have seven to eight speech therapists in the district. They all have their assigned caseloads. This current, uh, speech therapist that we are trying to fill a caseload for, she has twenty to thirty students of her own. So it's, it's really difficult for all the others to pick up that caseload.
So we're not replacing the old, we're just helping find services for the children.
During her absence only.
Yeah, I did, I think I asked this question on the table. What, what are we doing now? Uh, what, we, we apparently knew this was going to be coming up. We apparently knew that this is going to be coming up, that this lady is going to take lead. So what steps did we take prior to where we are tonight to get a replacement for her without going through a service where we have to pay out more money?
We actually reached out to our retired personnel to see if they were willing to come back and serve some time. Um, they, they did not want to, to work with us. Um, we also looked into other, um, companies that may have students or if the students that we currently have an internship would be available. And at this point in time, they cannot provide that certified service.
Boy, I'm concerned, and I've discussed this before, with the amount of money that we are outsourcing. And I, I'm just really concerned. And I would advise everyone to read these contracts. Let's not, just continue to vote on things that we don't know anything about. And hopefully our attorney is reading these contracts as well. And I'm very concerned at this point. I know we need apparently with this person in place, but I'm very concerned with the amount of money that we are outsourcing. And hopefully I'm not going to do it. We're all concerned of all of our overseers of the, of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
All in favor? At this time, I would like to ask you about therapy.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members and Dr. Lawkar.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the purchase of six seventy passenger, uh, gas buses. The purchase is a continuation of purchases from the twenty three, twenty four school year, and a motion was approved on June twenty fifth of two thousand twenty four to begin the process for acquiring the remaining vehicles. Our district received an amended school bus funding grant allocation from the state to purchase twelve buses with an allocated funding of eighty eight thousand, one hundred and ten per bus. The total amount awarded for these twelve buses is one million, fifty seven thousand, three hundred and twenty. These twelve buses must be purchased and paid for by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. The Yancey buses are currently in stock and can be ready for delivery within months after purchase. Gas buses are being recommended over diesel by our transportation department as they are less expensive to work on. The B B C V thirty three oh three gas seventy two passenger bus includes R E I cams, Yancey Air with five-year warranty, and many upgrades for the options of the bus, including a rolling battery tray, black window frames, jump stud for batteries, air drain valves at the side of the bus, backup camera, camera, and adjustable pedals. As far as the funding source, five hundred and twenty eight thousand, six hundred and sixty will come from the general fund, which equals eighty eight thousand, one hundred and ten per bus for six buses. Our district must pay this amount upfront, and then the state will reimburse us with the paid invoices which are submitted. Splosh six will fund the remaining amount of three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety. And attached to this rationale, you have specs from other, um, buses as well, including propane and diesel. But again, our recommendation is for the seventy two passenger gas bus. Any questions?
Madam Chair. I don't see Bluebird on here. Am I missing Bluebird?
Actually, Yancey is associated with Bluebird. It's a, it's a, a Bluebird funded company.
But Bluebird isn't on here.
Well, Yancey and Bluebird are one and the same. Yancey is a representative, representative of Bluebird.
The Bluebird by Yancey, Yancey was independent years ago.
To, to my understanding, Yancey is a representative, a salesman for the Bluebird Company.
What about Thomas?
Thomas, we did reach out to Thomas. However, um, the, uh, building of their buses would set us back at least two years. It would be a year and a half to two years before they could build and deliver the, uh, the Thomas bus to us. They're, they're way behind in production, uh, when speaking to the, um, representative of Thomas.
This is an act of honor. We have a motion.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any other say?
Approve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a motion to adjourn to a debate session which discusses personnel can be litigation in real estate.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.